Park time, park. Stand, hall. Left face. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Please be seated. Come out, face.
Tonight in recognition of Independence Day, I'm very honored to introduce the members of the Eugene Police Department Honor Guard who have just led us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and will now read the Declaration of Independence.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to introduce Officer in Command Steve Williams, Officer Theresa Barong, Officer Dale Dawson, Officer Rodney Thrower, and Officer Trent Magnuson, and thank them for presenting the colors.
Thank you. In Congress, July 4th, 1776, the unanimous declaration of the thirteen United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundations on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes, and accordingly all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government, and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the President-King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having the direct object, the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this let facts be submitted to a candid world. He has refused his assent to laws the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained, and when so suspended he has utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in the legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants only. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the repository of their public records, for the sole purpose of fatiguing them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness his invasions on the rights of the people. He has refused for a long time after such dissolutions to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise. The state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers and invasion from without and convulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states for that purpose obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their actions of pretended legislation, for quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by a mock trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states, for cutting off our trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government, and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our government, for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of its protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burned our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny already begun with circumstances of cruelty and perfidy scarcely paralleled in the most barbarous of ages, and totally unworthy of the head of a civilized nation. He has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country, to become the executioners of their friends and brethren, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections among us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions. In every stage of these oppressions we have petitioned for redress in most humble terms. Repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be a ruler of the free people. Nor have we been wanting our attention to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by the legislature to extend art and unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their need of justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and our correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and consanguinity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace friends. We therefore, the representatives of the United States of America and General Congress, assembled, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by the authority of the good people of these colonies solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are of right, and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown and all political connection between them and the State of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that as free and independent states they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and to do all other acts and things which independent states may have right do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor.
Let us all stand and thank our Police Department Honor Guard. We have a second ceremonial matter this evening, and that is forensic evidence unit accreditation ceremonial matter. It is my pleasure to invite Pam Boardner up to the podium for tonight's ceremonial presentation. Welcome. Pam is the American Society of Crime Laboratory Director's Laboratory Accreditation Board Chair, as well as the LAB Director of the Oregon State Police Lab in Bend. This is a major milestone for the Eugene Police Department Forensics Evidence Unit, as they are now the state's first local lab that will be ASCLAD accredited. Currently in this state there are only one state and two federal laboratories with ASCLAD Lab accreditation. It took about eight years for our forensic evidence unit to complete this extensive process. Along the way the unit was awarded a Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant in 2011 to help with the process. Accreditation is important because it ensures the laboratory meets the highest professional standards, and it provides an independent, impartial, objective system that will allow the laboratory to get a total operational review. Accredited laboratories are better suited to face challenges presented in the court and add credibility to judicial proceedings. It also provides a means by which the agency can be measured and monitored over time in the overall standard of laboratory services provided to the criminal justice system. FEU provides high-quality and timely forensic processing for Eugene Police Department cases, as well as federal agencies. Eugene Police Department has been performing forensics since at least 1959. Currently FEU handles latent fingerprints, including evidence screening, surveillance video, and advanced crime scene reconstruction. The unit handles approximately 120 new cases per month. Pam will now present Eugene Police Chief Kearns, Forensic Supervisor Jason Peterson, and his staff with their certificate of accreditation. Congratulations.
Thanks for having me this evening. I'm really pleased to be here to represent the ASCLAD Lab Board of Directors to recognize the significant achievement of your forensic evidence unit. I had a great speech written, and I left the hotel room, I left my iPad sitting on the table, I remembered my puppy and a handful of towels.
I've been there.
But the iPad's back there with the beautiful speech. So, I just want to tell you a little bit about the accreditation process. It is a very lengthy process to go through. It takes months and years of preparation to go through the over 400 standards that the laboratory has to meet to become accredited. It takes a significant commitment from the entire department, from the chief through the management team, and down to the entire forensic evidence unit. It's very impressive that the Eugene Police Department went through this process before it was mandated. The process starts, as I was saying, long before the assessment team gets on site. Before the assessment team shows up, they've gone through the operational and technical procedures of the laboratory, a lot of personnel qualification documents, and things like that. Once they show up, they're going to take a look at the management of the laboratory, how things are implemented, are procedures being followed, what are your evidence handling procedures, the facility security, and of course casework. Once the assessment team is satisfied that the laboratory has shown compliance with all of the standards, that is when accreditation is granted. So, this is a very significant achievement. I'm pleased to be here. Thank you, Jason, for inviting me. I'd like to present this certificate to Jason, and I'll read it to you. The American Society of Crime Laboratory Director's Laboratory Accreditation Board declares to all advocates of truth, justice, and the law that the management and technical operations of the Eugene Police Department Forensic Evidence Unit have been found through assessment to meet the requirements of ISO, IEC 1702-5, 2005, general requirements for the competence of testing and calibration laboratories, the ASCLAD Lab International Supplemental Requirements for Testing Laboratories 2011, and all other requirements of the ASCLAD Lab International Program, and is granted this certificate of accreditation in the field of forensic science testing for the categories of testing listed on the corresponding scope of accreditation.
I want you all to come up here in front of the...
In front of the logo.
Yep.
Head up here.
Yeah, the other side, chief.
I always end up behind the tall guy.
You don't stand up.
No, it's perfectly fine.
We're very proud of that. Thank you so much. And then the last ceremonial matter we have this evening is a LULAC proclamation. Counselor Evans.
Mayor, did we...I don't see anyone from the LULAC board here. Do we notify them, or...
That would be bad.
I don't happen to answer to that. I'm assuming that we didn't...
Probably not.
I'll go ahead and read it, and then if there's...
It's for the community.
Another deal, we go from there. Okay. Office of the Mayor, City of Eugene, Oregon, a proclamation. Whereas 84 years ago, the founders of the League of United Latin American Citizens, better known as LULAC, joined together to establish an organization that would become the largest, oldest, and most successful Hispanic civil rights and service organization in the United States. And whereas, since its inception on February 17th, 1929, in Corpus Christi, Texas, LULAC has championed the cause of Hispanic Americans in education, employment, economic development, and civil rights. And whereas, LULAC has developed a comprehensive set of nationwide programs fostering educational attainment, job training, housing, scholarships, citizenship, and voter registration. And whereas, LULAC members throughout the nation have developed a tremendous track record of success in advancing the economic condition, educational attainment, political influence, health, and civil rights of the population of the United States. And whereas, LULAC has adopted a legislative platform that promotes humanitarian relief for citizens and immigrants, increased educational opportunities for our youth, the equal treatment for all in the United States and its territories, including the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. And whereas, this year, the League of United Latin American Citizens will celebrate its 84 years of community service to increase educational opportunities and improve the quality of life for Americans. And whereas, LULAC continues to work for the betterment of Hispanic Americans, and it continues to fight discrimination, poverty, educational inequities, disparities, and political representation. And whereas, LULAC continues to work to assure that future Hispanic American generations receive all the constitutional rights inherited by them as citizens of the United States of North America. Now therefore, I Kitty Piercy, Mayor of the City of Eugene, Oregon, do hereby proclaim July 8th, 2013 as League of United Latin American Citizens Recognition Day. In recognition of LULAC, Lane County's inherent value of community service and volunteerism in the creation of a civil society, and as a means of community progress consistent with the mission of the League of United Latin American Citizens, the City of Eugene further recognizes the benefits of the collaborative work by many organizations that promote, facilitate, and carry out needed service projects nationwide, and encourages its members and colleagues to urge their constituents to participate in community service projects. The City of Eugene acknowledges that by serving one's community, one's community, and one's neighbor, our nation makes progress in civility, equality, and unity consistent with the values, vision, and mission of LULAC. The citizens and residents of Eugene are asked to join LULAC membership in observing the organization's 84 years of service and the outstanding contributions LULAC has made to our country. Signed, this 8th day of July, 2013, Kitty Piercy, Mayor, City of Eugene.
Thank you, Greg. All right. We're going to move on to our next item, which is the public forum. I'm going to open the public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I have 16 people signed up to speak. We'll start out with Helen Legori, followed by Jim Hale.
Helen Legori, Eugene, Ward 2. Mayor Kitty, the Homeless Solutions Support Committee wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yesterday, at the park blocks, you mentioned the contribution to be made by Core Campus as the beginning of a shelter fund. Good news, but I realize now that's about six or seven years down the road, five years from building completion. When that happens, the Homeless Solutions Support Committee asks to know the dollar amount of the contribution, and also that the $200,000 earmarked last year for wet beds be added to a shelter fund to get the ball rolling sooner, like now. I urge council to act to inspire contributions to a shelter fund, much as the mayor did last year for the holidays campaign. Homeless Solutions Support is not a committee meaning to only give you headaches, but prescriptions as well. We are partners with you in addressing homelessness and the attendant hardships. There are bright, devoted, compassionate Eugenians on this committee. They voluntarily give up their time, their talent, and money in the cause of justice for the unhoused. The city council has benefited from these gifts and prescriptions. They unhouse, not so much so. The giving has been hard work. We look forward to speedy implementation of rest stops, and a transparent shelter fund, and site plan, perhaps the Romania property. Thank you.
Jim Hale is next, followed by Leonard Epstein.
Mayor, here's the counsel, Jim Hale, 1715 Linea Avenue, in Ward 5. I'd like to tell you I support your ban on plastic bags. It's hard for a conservative to say that probably, but I do support that. I've read four or five books over the last 15 years about peak oil. Not sure when we're going to run out of oil. But when we do, it's going to be real inconvenient. No more air vales, no more fertilizer, no more airline fuel, because we have no idea how we're going to replace petroleum as the basis for all of those products. We have lots of ideas for paper bag, for plastic bags and gasoline, but we don't have a lot of ideas for those things. And it's going to be inconvenient for my grandson, or his son, somewhere around in there, we're going to be wishing we had not wasted a lot of petroleum in our generation. I'd like to also tell you I support the 5 cent charge for bags. I'm in a part-time capacity, a closing manager for a major grocery store. I don't speak for my employer tonight, but I will tell you that there's been a lot of changes from that 5 cent, from that 5 cent bag price. A lot of people get four or five things, take them home in their hands. And they get anywhere from five things to 30 or 40 things, and they forgot their bags, so they put them in their cart and take them out, put them in their recyclable bags that they left in their car. It's real inconvenient. But if you take away the 5 cent charge, the bag cost of grocery stores is going to skyrocket. Now, there are people who think that their groceries ought to be free, and that their bags ought to be free. But their bags have never been free. The paper bag has always cost them a nickel because it's always been a part of the price they paid for their groceries at the grocery store. I personally prefer the situation where if I remember my bag, I'm not inconvenienced. And if I don't remember my bag, it's my own darn fault. And I think that's how most people are beginning to see this after a few weeks. I think that's how most people are seeing it. They're wishing that they had remembered. They're no longer talking so much about you as they are talking about themselves. If you allow them to have a plastic bag for everything, or a paper bag for everything, free again, it's never been free, I'm going to pay for it whether I remember my bag or not. I shouldn't have to do that. I believe that everybody can remember to be in their bag if they train themselves a little bit. It's hard for old dogs to learn new tricks, but I believe we're all capable of remembering to do that. Because someday, we're going to wish that we suffered a little inconvenience in our generation, because our descendants are going to be largely inconvenienced by the realities of this planet. Thank you so much.
Leonard Epstein is next, followed by Bruce Wald.
Hi, good evening. My name's Leonard Epstein. I live in southeast Eugene at 41st Avenue. This is a matter that has to do with July 4th, and I enjoy July 4th as much as anybody else. And yet, we certainly had a problem in our neighborhood this July 4th, because beginning at around sundown on July 4th, and lasting at least until midnight, there were regular and frequent explosions of powerful fireworks that were heard very close to my home and neighbors' homes. It felt like being in the middle of a war zone. I would like to request that police actively patrol neighborhoods after dark on July 4th to pinpoint where fireworks are occurring, and to both determine whether the fireworks are legal, and to cite people when they continue to set off fireworks after the time permitted by city ordinance. I think that would be a very good use of time to sort of allow people to have a good July 4th. I think this was a really difficult experience, and I hope the council will take that to heart and do something to try to improve on the situation. Thank you very much.
Bruce Wald is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
I tune into a local television newscast at 5 o'clock on July 5th. The report started off by exclaiming that the 4th had been very quiet. They were not in my neighborhood. Skyrockets and bombs were going off well past 10:00 PM. It seemed like the police and fire departments should be prepared for noisy 4ths. I know that the, in Portland, the police and the Fire Bureau actually cite people. Have to go back and say, I'm also from the southeast part of Eugene. And we had fireworks and bombs going off in both directions, north and south, from my house. It's not clear what policing was occurring that night, because I called later about another issue. I'm not going to bring that up on the same evening, early in the morning, but there was not a lot of police presence in our neighborhood. There had been a few days before cars going through the neighborhood, but not during the time of the fireworks. So, might the city leaders be a little more proactive on the 4th? New Year's Eve isn't a great evening either. Now, I'm not anti-fireworks. I'm anti-illegal fireworks and significant noise after 10:00 PM. A good friend of mine, who owns a dog that I pass on the running trails, the dog was up and down the stairs and very upset till 1:00 in the morning after all this noise in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Ally Valkyrie is next, followed by Savramar... Ali Valkyrie is next, followed by Sabra Markroft.
Ali Valkyrie, Ward 1. In digesting the ideas and discussions that's being used around the proposed homeless camping ordinance, a couple of things aren't sitting right with me. One is the idea that homeless camping shouldn't be taking place in residential areas or near parks and schools, and the other has to do with neighborhood opposition and the apparent position of the council that such opposition should be considered and that neighborhoods should have a say in who gets to live in them. I feel like we've forgotten that every single homeless person once lived in a home, all of them, whether it was a few months ago or a few years ago. Those on the street were once your neighbors and perhaps your coworkers. They all lived in houses. Many had jobs, many had children. They were members of your community. They still are. Now, I'm lucky enough to live in a house, but I'll admit, I don't know all my neighbors well. Website tells me there's 13 predatory sex offenders in my neighborhood. I'm not thrilled, but I also have no control over it. State law mandates that they register, but no one asked my permission when they moved into my neighborhood. Similarly, I learned that there's numerous convicted felons in my neighborhood. No one ever held a neighborhood council meeting asking me how I felt about that. No one ever sought my approval before they took residence on my block. There are drug addicts and dealers on my block, and I've never seen anyone at this podium protesting their presence in my neighborhood. Everyone's worried about criminals amongst the homeless, but the simple fact is that the majority of thieves, thugs, sex offenders, convicted felons, substance abuses, and career criminals in this town all live in houses, all of them. They are already your neighbors, and I don't see or hear of any political forces mobilizing and fighting to keep them out of our neighborhoods. So why are the homeless being treated so differently? Why does anyone in their right mind think it's acceptable to hold the homeless to higher standards than the state does for predatory sex offenders? So again, let's rely on facts instead of fear and accept that homeless people are quite experienced at living in residential neighborhoods and that the people we should really fear are the ones who are already living in our neighborhoods, not the ones who are sleeping in our parks. And yet, there's all this constant fear and worry expressed from every corner in the city about the dangers of allowing people without homes to sleep, fear that's unfortunately reflected back by some city officials. And I watch time and time again as we bow down to bigoted pressure from powerful and entitled nimbies in this community who think that they should be able to dictate who lives in their neighborhood. I'm reminded time and time again that back in the day, neighborhoods and municipalities had very wide latitude on who to wow in their neighborhood, and such practices were deemed discriminatory by the Supreme Court. Restricting the homeless to industrial neighborhoods is nothing more than a modern version of redlining. I was in a meeting last week concerning campers in the wetlands. Over and over again, I hear a reference to "the problems." They are not problems. They are people. They are people. They are people. They are as human as you and I. They are as brilliant and as flawed as you and I. They are us. They are just like anyone in this room. How can we claim to be a human rights city when so many seemingly can't stand behind the principle that the homeless are people who are entitled to basic human rights? Thank you.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Wayne Martin.
Hi, I'm Sabra Markroft. I reside in Ward 7. I was also at the meeting with the BLM. I was also at the meeting with the BLM, and (sigh) to my chagrin, I heard the representatives of the BLM ask for help in handling the problems of removing homeless people from the area in which they are set to do environmental restoration, and not a single person at the table was able to offer any promise of help. And I would ask you to remember this as you work things out in your work session on Wednesday. Please remember that at least 100 people are going to be displaced. 20 or 30 right in the main parcel and more will be displaced starting tomorrow and ending the 29th is the period where they will be beginning to move people out. The 29th begins the closure. There is no place for these people to go. I heard Norman from Whitebird speak very poignantly about being called to watch people die because there are no resources being made available. There is a woman who is camped out there, who works at a local social service agency and has for several years and has lived in the same place. She cannot afford a place to live, and yet she continues to work to serve those who are less well-off than she is. Another woman who worked for 17 years as a bus driver, but she failed the blood pressure check on her physical, and she was let go, and she has no resources to re-up her education to get a better job, if there were one, for someone in her early 50s. There is no place, and if we cannot find one of our dozens of empty buildings to house people like this, then how dare we call ourselves a human rights city? This is only the beginning of a wave, and if we cannot even begin to prepare, we will have to harden our hearts, and we will have to watch people die. It's already beginning. I'm sorry to be so harsh, but we have to work on this now. We can't dally. And thank you.
Wayne Martin is next, followed by Lynn Porter.
Appreciate the opportunity to address you. I'm still a new resident, have been here now 15 months, very excited about being in Eugene. And when I've spoken to you, I've felt that you were listening. I've even felt a connection. I applaud you for that. That's impressive. I'm a retired pastor. I'm a Vietnam vet. I was a Navy Explosive Ordnance Disposal Officer, trained, made two trips to Vietnam. That may or may not be related, but at least it's important to bear in mind that I have a great passion for this country and for vets. I carry it with me. In April, I attended your work session here, April 24th. Your work session was the one you may remember well, where there were ideas postulated and even presented and even agreed to happily to, as you remember, establish some sites on a trial basis for those who needed a place to stay with some sort of temporary shelter. There were other things that we, as a steering committee of Opportunity Village, asked of you, and to my great delight, you actually exceeded my expectations. It was stunning. You have no idea what kind of inner standing ovation I gave to you. Two days later, I went to visit my daughter in Spain. We walked the Camino, the Camino de Santiago. When I got off the plane, she said, "How's everything going with Opportunity Village?" And I said, "It was Christmas two days ago." You know, I made some promises to my kids around Christmas, too. I didn't always keep them. I tried, and when I didn't, I was a little sad, but I tried really hard. And sometimes we just have to go back and see what hasn't happened that we promised at Christmas and take it very seriously again and not be hard on ourselves, but just say, you know, "Do we think reality has affected this? Maybe it was fine until reality came in? Ah, that was reality. You were in the midst of reality, and you acted with courage, and I call you back to that reality, despite the fact that other people have other ideas. I call you back to it. You can do this, and I'll give you another inner standing ovation, and so will a lot of other people." Thanks so much.
Lynn Porter is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
I'm Lynn Porter. I live in Councilor Saretz Ward. I run the Homeless Action email list, Facebook page, and YouTube channel. First, the good news. Opportunity Village Eugene has been able to cite 14 Conestoga huts under St. Vincent de Paul's vehicle camping program. Two of the huts have couples in them, so a total of 16 people are now off the streets. The main limitation is finding sites. There are only so many church parking lots available. Opportunity Village is scheduled to open in August, housing between 30 and 40 people. So by the time winter gets here, we may have 56 people in, out of the rain and cold. Now, the bad news. The mission has cut down on the number of people they serve because of staffing limitations and because they don't want to work anymore with alcoholics and addicts. This means 100 to 150 more people on the street every night. The Bureau of Land Management, as has been previously mentioned, will start pushing people out of their land in the West Eugene wetlands tomorrow. I don't know how many people are camped there. I just heard, I believe Sabra said 100, but they'll have to go somewhere else. So if you look at those numbers, shelter gained and shelter being lost, the bottom line is we're falling behind on sheltering the homeless. We're not making progress, even though we're doing a lot of good things and there's a lot of good people working on this. We're falling behind. Here's what I would like you to do Wednesday at your work session, and I'm speaking strictly for myself here. Pass the part of the city manager's proposed ordinance that would increase the number of vehicles allowed at each of St. Vincent de Paul's vehicle camping sites from 3 to 6. Allow them to use the four city-owned sites suggested by Councilor Brown at your June 26 meeting, which are away from residences. This seems to me a no-brainer. The program has been operating for years, and I haven't heard of any complaints. We don't need to wait on a pilot program. Just give some more support to the programs we already have. Thank you.
Michael Carrigan is next, followed by, I cannot read the last name, it's Rich
My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm the Shelter Rights Organizer with Community Alliance of Lane County, and I'm on the board of Opportunity Village Eugene, and I live in Ward 7. We feel it's a basic human right to be able to sleep safely. We feel the city of Eugene has let folks sleep undisturbed from dusk to dawn unless they are committing a crime. However, I recognize that the proposal city staff has put before you to modify the camping ban is much more limited than that, and will be identifying only eight possible places where the unhoused can sleep from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. I want to thank Kurt Corey, Director of Public Works and other city staff, for their hard work identifying possible locations for these rest stops, and thanks to all of you for your hard work regarding this issue. On a positive note, we applaud the proposal to change the car camping program to increase from 3 to 6 the number of cars, tents, campers, and Conestoga huts that can be located at any one site. The car camping program has really worked. We have a Conestoga and a tent in the Calp backyard and has improved our security and the security of our immediate neighbors. The car camping program up to now has been serving only a small percentage of Eugene's homeless, however. As you just heard, the BLM announced that by July 29th, it'll be removing roughly 100 people from the West Eugene wetlands, so it can restore the area. And the mission announced changes that will significantly reduce the number of folks who can sleep there. That's why it's so critical for council to authorize city staff to identify a number of rest stops. One is not enough. A large number of homeless calls for us to take strong action and effective action and think big. We can do it. Homeless advocates are committed to help manage the rest stops. We are willing to recruit camp hosts that live in Conestogas who can manage and monitor the sites. We are also willing to help raise funds to pay for toilets and trash recycling for the rest stops. We understand the neighborhood buy-in will help make this program work, help make the rest stops a success. Opportunity Village Eugene, for example, has successfully reached out to the Trainsong neighborhood, and they now strongly support the village at Second and Garfield. We envision talking to any and all neighbors who may live near the rest stops. Obviously, not everybody will be supportive. I know you're hearing from folks opposed to the rest stops. I urge you not to let the loudest, most contentious voices put a stop to this program. I believe there is broad support for the establishment of well-organized and well-run rest stops. Calcan other nonprofits advocating for the homeless are committed to working with city staff and city council to make these rest stops work and show the world that Eugene is indeed a human rights city. Thank you.
Rich, you're next tonight. Sorry. Say your name, and I'll write it in here. And the next is Art Bowman. Please introduce yourself.
Pardon?
Introduce yourself.
Yes, I will. I'm Rich In Love, and I live in the Whittaker District. Okay. 10 cents, double-bagged. 10 cents, 10 cents. These bags will last me for three months, because... And I expect them to last absolutely longer. They're double-bagged. I am careful what I put into them, don't overload them, and I keep them in safe places. And this is my bag that's had for eight years, laundered repeatedly. Okay? So I'm bringing this to your attention, that there is a learning curve. Well, first of all, thank you for mayor and members of the council for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm showing this because it's a visual, and I hope that it will help you to see that actually by having a bag fee, it helps people to be environmentally conscious, go in that direction, which I think is a benefit to the city and a benefit to the individuals who endeavor to practice environmental consciousness. It's a learning curve. It's an adjustment, but I think it can be done. And I think that if you have the courage to say that we're, we think this is the right thing, and we feel that this is the direction we need to go to, and we will support the learning curve and the adjustments as much as we can, but we're not going to rescind the bag fee because we think it's the right thing to do for our city and for the country, for the city of Eugene and for the country, for the world. So I thank you for that. And I would end with this, that nature can survive very well without us, but we can't survive without nature. So we should be a friend to nature if we want to be, if we want nature to be a friend to us. It's a relationship. Thank you very much. And the last thing I'll say is that I also have to make an adjustment for this, remember this, otherwise I pay for something to get it plastic. So I bring my own jars for my, when I want to get something at Kiva, for instance. I'm learning to do that. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Art Bowman is next, followed by Allison Knight.
Hi, I'm Art Bowman in the first ward. When we look around, I think most people in Eugene would agree that our economic problems mostly stem from the lack of good jobs that pay a living wage. Now, for those of you who aren't aware of it, I'd like to direct your attention to a issue that's currently making its way through. I believe the Sustainability Commission to have Eugene sign up as a sweat-free city. This is a nationwide coalition of cities that have agreed to actually exercise a conscience in their purchasing of items such as, for example, the uniforms that police and fire department employees make and other things to make sure that they're manufactured by basically companies that have their workers make living wages, so you don't have to worry that taxpayer money is going to subsidize companies that use child labor, that maybe kill workers in the Third World who try to form unions and some of the other unsavory things that we're all aware of. Currently in Oregon, both Portland and Ashland have joined this coalition. There's a great deal of sharing of information, so they know which employers are, so they know which companies are following ethical practices. And frankly, I think this is something that most of your constituents would rather have their taxpayer money going towards. I think regardless of their political philosophy, if you were to ask the average taxpayer where they'd like to see their money go, they'd like to have it go to companies that actually respect their workers' rights. In fact, if this seems like too hot to vote, I'd be perfectly happy if you put this before the people of the city of Eugene, because I think it would pass. But right now, it's just working its way through the commission, and I want to urge all of you to pay careful attention, and I hope you support it when it actually comes before you. Thank you.
Allison Knight is next, followed by Max Diaz. Allison Knight is next, followed by Max Diaz.
My name is Allison. I live in Ward Six, I believe. I'm about to be a third-year student at the University of Oregon Law School. And for the past two years, I've had the great privilege of being a volunteer with the West Eugene and Bethel Teen Court Program. Teen Court, for those of you who don't know, is a diversion program that allows first-time juvenile offenders the opportunity to expunge their record. It's a sentencing hearing in which middle and high school students serve all court functions, so student attorneys, student jurors, court clerk, a member of the bar is a judge. But the unique thing about it is that offenders actually come back as part of their sentence and serve on the jury at a later time. So this provides a great opportunity for students to learn about advocacy, to see all sides of an issue, and it also provides a great opportunity for volunteering for middle and high school students. Teen Court is an excellent resource for the community. It provides a needed resource, since the Department of Youth Services doesn't have the resources itself to prosecute most of these crimes. So without the Teen Court Program, it would just go with either a warning letter or nothing at all. And early intervention is really important to preventing future crime. It leads to hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings down the line. But also, it gives students an opportunity to give back to their community and to learn in a way that they wouldn't have been able to before. Teen Court volunteers have been recognized. Thirty-five volunteers have been recognized in the Register Guard Volunteer Spotlight. Four have been awarded the United Way of Lane County Volunteer of the Year. One has been awarded a Community Mediation Peace Builder Award, and three have been named Future First Citizens. We wanted to say thank you for extending the funding for another year and just ask you to keep us in mind as the budget talks continue. And we would expect to be a part of those discussions, but we just wanted to let you know that this is an important part of the community for us, and we think it should be for you as well. Thank you.
Max Diaz is next, followed by Nick Erhousen.
Hi. My name is Max Diaz. I live in the Bethel District. And so I'm here to talk today about Teen Court as well, just like Allison did. I've volunteered for Teen Court for about seven years now. And I grew up in a very, I grew up going to a small private school, small private religious school, my whole life. And even though I was a little bit young when I started volunteering for Teen Court, I know that just having that very, I guess, protected childhood and just protected growing up, I guess, really affected me in the way I view just the world around me and the people around me. After volunteering for Teen Court, I think everything really changed for me, especially just the way that I view my community. I never really thought about it too much, I guess, just how much of an impact that I have in the community, how much of a difference that I can make. The minute that I started volunteering, though, and the minute that I started to see the faces of the people that were coming through, it really makes you think, I think, about the people around you and the struggles that they all face. I know that for me, I came in with this, just this preconception of everyone that would be coming through thinking about how they ultimately wrong, maybe slightly judging them a bit for their mistakes. But as the years went on, I think you begin to grow as a person, and I was able to really see that each person that comes through, each teenager, young kids, you know, there's a story behind each case, and there's a story behind everything that everyone does. And it really, really makes you just stop and think about how, even though people face these struggles, they're still people. And when they're so young, you just see how much they change coming back and volunteering. And I think that's probably the biggest thing. I just wanted to let you guys know, it's just how important I think it is that there is this outlet, that there is this way for people that maybe make mistakes, especially at such a young part in their life, can really come back and really just take a full step and just a big breath and really look at what they've done and really take a look about how they can still make a difference, and that all those things, even though they may have been mistakes, can still come around and be used for something positive. So I guess I just wanted to say to all of you, just thank you for letting me speak here, first of all. That's really cool. I know I could even do this. So, but thank you for hearing me out, and I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support, or at least looking out into how you can work out the budget for different city programs. But Teen Court definitely makes an impact on the youth, and I've seen it growing up throughout the years. So, thanks so much.
Nick Erhousen is next, followed by Wesley Schweitzer.
Nick Erhousen, Ward Eight. I'm kind of here to make a few comments on the plastic bag ban and the five-dollar, five-cent deposit on the paper bags. I can understand why the, where the theory came from that the plastic bags could destroy the planet someday, and after all, if they did it in Portland, we should do it here. We're kind of a monkey see, monkey do culture, and so it just makes sense. But as far as the paper bags, I've, people have been shopping for decades, and nobody's ever told us that plastic bags are destroying the planet. We've never voted on the issue, so I don't know how much support is out there. But I do, I have observed a couple of things. You made life kind of miserable for retail clerks. They're kind of charged with enforcing a law they don't believe in. Of course, they get off by saying, "Thank Kitty for this." Now, on the other hand, there's a certain silver lining for me, because this, on a daily basis, reinforces average citizens, what they dislike about city council, and arrogance and the, you know, we're, we kind of have two people, two types of people, the ones that say, they want to tell everybody else what to do, and the ones that just want to be left alone. But anyway, I don't meet many, come across many people that are in support of this thing, especially this five cent. I mean, it's an insignificant amount of money, but it seems to have irritated an awful lot of people who, basically, they tell me on principle, they're not going to pay it. They seem to think it's some kind of a tax or something. So it makes it easier to defeat measures, tax measures, by two-to-one margins. So there is some benefit to having this five-cent deposit. Thank you.
Last up, Wesley Schweitzer.
I'm Wesley Schweitzer. I live at, on Emerald Street in Mitty Taylor's district. Plastic photo degenerates, or whatever it does. And you get a soup of plastic in the ocean. It's about the size of Texas. And if you can imagine if the, your whole house was filled up with water, and all this plastic was in that water, just soup everywhere, all different types of plastic. Think about what your pets would be doing with that plastic. You wouldn't even have to imagine that maybe your cats could swim, or your dogs could swim through that plastic. But imagine the octopus, the other sea animals. So a lot of people do support the plastic ban. I collected two thousand-plus signatures along with Surf Rider, along with a number of other environmental groups, in a campaign to support it. It's only been, it's only been a few months. These bags will be around for thousands of years, long before we're dead. But most of the bags will end up in the landfill, costing the city money to fill up the landfill, and consumers to pay for the landfill space. What can we do with all this plastic? Let's stop this, let's stop it to begin with. Animals are dying. Our oceans are dying. It's going to be expensive to fix. Please give the plastic bag ban a chance to work. People get used to it. It takes time. They plug drains, they fill the ocean, they kill animals, our rivers end up with them. It's just ugly. It makes Oregon ugly, an ugly place to visit. Nobody wants to visit a plastic plant. They get dirty, they get stuck. Please consider resuming the ban on plastic bags. A year, maybe reconsider, but by then, people will be so used to it, it won't make a difference. But thank you for your time.
To close a public hearing and thank everyone, I was struck tonight by everybody caring about things that are important to people in the community, from homeless folks to safety and on the fourth, to sweat-free city, to Teen Court, to what we do with the plastic bags. So I just appreciate all of you coming and speaking. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any, I mean, Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. I want to correct an impression. I don't think anyone's thinking of getting rid of the plastic bag ban. It's the paper bag we're talking about. Maybe someone is, but I don't think that's going to happen. But I just wanted to thank, say, it was a pleasure to see Nick Erhousen and Jim Hale again, that used to be constant commentators at our meetings, and they were on opposite sides tonight, but it was a pleasure to see both of them. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah. Legal fireworks in Eugene and Oregon are ones that don't go more than one foot, and they don't make an excessively loud boom. Therefore, almost everything that I heard on the Fourth of July and around the Fourth of July, and they're still hearing, is, are illegal. So it's not the fireworks that are sold at the stands and they're let off in the streets and that we use as fundraisers, and people do them in their own front yard or backyards. I was eating dinner outside on the Fourth of July on my patio, and all six of us commented on how bad it was, and it was like a war zone, literally. It was like, constant barrage for about an hour or longer until about eleven-thirty. And it was the worst it'd ever been, and I don't remember it ever being that bad. And I was sad that my golden retriever wasn't with us, but I was glad he wasn't with us because he would get completely stressed out and go hide. And I would like to see us look at this issue before next year and see if there's a way to deal with the illegal fireworks, not the stuff that everybody, that aren't, the things that people aren't talking about. The other issue is the Sustainability Commission and the Human Rights Commission are looking at a sweat-free policy for city purchasing and making a recommendation about that, but not necessarily joining the coalition, because there's some issues around the coalition. But just to let you know, we are looking at that policy.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I also wanted to chime in on the issue of illegal fireworks. There was a house fire in my ward that several of my friends attributed to fireworks, but I don't know for a fact certain it was caused by illegal fireworks, but it was a total loss over by my kid's school, which is a shame if it was caused by fireworks. But having spent about ten years in the Active Twenty-Thirty Club and running the Freedom Festival at Alton Baker Park a few years, I've been around and spent the day with the mortar tubes and the three- and four-inch shells. And I can tell you from experience that what we're hearing in the neighborhoods is sometimes two- and three-inch mortar shells going into the air. Now, I don't want to be too harsh on folks having a good time. I understand that just as well as anybody. And, you know, there's a certain level of reasonableness I think we should probably try to get to. We can't enforce absolutely every single, you know, person who steps over the line on the Fourth of July, because from what I hear, it's pretty significant. But there are some folks that aren't just stepping over the line, they're jumping clean over it about a mile and a half. And I think we need to do a better job with enforcement. I don't know the answer. In previous years, I've suggested, you know, what we could, how we could involve the fire department appropriately, but I know they don't want to be enforcers of city, you know, rules and city policy. So I don't know how we get creative with our resources to do that, Mr. Manager, but I, I think we're well past reasonable and need to do something different about how we enforce the illegal stuff.
Councilor Chirid?
Yeah, I'm going to pile on here. I actually had to leave my neighborhood on the Fourth of July, partly because I have a dog who completely freaks out with fireworks. And we've had illegal fireworks going off in our neighborhood for a week before the Fourth of July and continuing on, and sometimes at one o'clock and two o'clock in the morning. So, and enforcement is a challenge. You know, our police officers are overburdened, they have serious crime to deal with, and but it is, more than a nuisance, it's a burden on the neighborhoods when it becomes that constant and that loud. So I have put in a request for a poll to see if we could have a work session on the fireworks issue. So I'm glad we got some folks at Public Comment asking us to take a look at that. I know other folks will be upset that we will look at that recreational aspect, but some of what we are hearing are actually, as Councilor Clark says, mortars that are illegal to be fired off in the city. So we'll see what we can accomplish around that. I know it's been taken up before without any good solutions. And then I also want to thank the folks who came to share their thoughts around the homelessness issue. We're still struggling with that, and we are hearing from folks out in neighborhoods who are concerned about city parks being used for homeless camping. And, you know, I think some of those concerns are very legitimate and deserve to be heard just as the concerns of folks on behalf of the homeless deserve to be heard as well. It's a very challenging thing of competing needs and desires, and, you know, it's our job to try and sort through those as best we can, but there aren't any easy solutions there. And then I also thank Art Bowman for mentioning the sweat-free ordinance and the issue around living wage jobs. You know, I think that does really contribute to our homeless issue, is that folks aren't able to earn a wage that allows them to find a place to rent. And so, you know, the things we could do to start getting at that are going to be important to solving that problem from both directions. So thanks, everyone, for your comments tonight.
Well, not wanting to be, continuing to pile on, but maybe I will just a tad, and just say that I feel like this is different than complaint-driven things where you're not possibly putting someone's life in danger or causing property harm or animal harm or all of those. I think this is a different category. And so I don't look at this as something that we can turn away from. We're not talking about something that's legal that we want to make illegal. We're talking about something that's already illegal and seems to be exacerbated. So I join everyone else in thinking we need to figure out ways to deal with this in a different way, and if it's illegal, it's illegal. So I think we need to treat it like that. All right, let's move on. Consent calendar's up next. Council President?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Seconded, discussion?
Beautiful, yes, aren't you? No discussion.
No discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please vindicate. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So now we are on to an ordinance suspending the paper bag pass-through charge. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In October 2012, the city council adopted ordinance number 20498, encouraging the use of recyclable, usable bags by banning single-use plastic carryout bags and requiring a five-cent fee for carryout recycled paper bags. The ordinance went into effect on May first of 2013. On the May thirteenth, the city council voted to reevaluate the paper bag pass-through fee by proposing an ordinance to suspend the five-cent-per-bag charge during an evaluation period. Public hearing was held on June tenth. The proposed ordinance would suspend the five-cent fee until December first, 2013.
All right. Council President?
I move to approve Council Bill 5094, an ordinance suspending the paper bag pass-through charge during reevaluation of the fee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Council Brown?
Yeah, I was the, probably the only grocer sitting up here. I have a little bit of experience with this, and I'm not on the check stand like I used to be once I got on council, but I still do check groceries. And so, and I never really heard any negative comments about the nickel fee. And so I thought, okay. I went around and talked to all my coworkers, all of whom support the nickel fee, everybody, the new people, the old hands. And yes, they told me, yes, there've been a few complaints, but nothing really, you know, really serious and angry. People thought it was, you know, an inconvenience, and initially it was, but people are, seem to be, at least in our store, seem to be adapting to it, and... And I think we really need to give it at least a year to let everyone adapt to the program before we think about tinkering with it. So I will not be supporting this ordinance. And, you know, anecdotally, I shop at other stores too, so I've asked people at other stores, the clerks, and they said, yes, yes, there has been some complaints, some quite vociferous, but in general, at least the stores that I asked at, it seems to be working pretty well. So I definitely need to give it my time, and I won't be supporting it. Thanks.
Councilor Polling?
Yeah, I am going to support the motion. I've talked to some people that manage grocery stores as well as an email that we received, and basically, I'll just read the email. It says, "Please rescind the extra charge for bags. This is and always has been part of any business overhead. You note, 'We don't pay extra for any other business supplies' as they are built into the selling price." Now, this is from an owner of a local grocery store. I just think that it's time to maybe take the 5-cent fee away and, you know, see how it goes with that. There's very few people that I've talked to that are opposed to the plastic bag ban in general. It's just the 5-cent fee. You know, there's comments about people, I've received comments from people going to Springfield to shop because they don't want to pay the extra 5 cents, and it's not the 5 cents to those folks, it's the principle. You know, the original proposal on the ordinance was to allow the individual grocery stores the opportunity to charge up to 5 cents if they wanted to. So the wording got changed from "may" to "shall" or "may" to "will." I think we should, you know, go back to the original and just, or just do away with 5 cents altogether, rather, and reevaluate it to see how we're doing at the end of that period.
Councilor Zelenka?
I think it's too soon to tinker with this. It needs to settle in. The action to initiate this particular suspension, hadn't even had, two weeks had passed before the ordinance went into effect that we started to do this. Too early to tell if it was working or not, or what to change. I think it's natural for people to resist and complain about change, and I sympathize. I do it too, and like to do it, but I think people are getting used to it. And there is, as one of the gentlemen said, a learning curve. The Market Choice where I shop, I was talking to a bagger, and she said that almost completely all of the comments had stopped already. And the rationale for the 5-cent fee was first and foremost to get people to switch to reusable bags instead of the single-use plastic carryout bags, which are environmentally damaging, not recycled, only about 2% or 3% or 5% are, and if they're reused, they're used rarely more than once. Little old Eugene used 67 million single-use plastic carryout bags in a year. And the purpose was not also just merely to get people to shift to paper bags. When Portland instituted their fee, or when they instituted their ordinance banning plastic bags, they had a 500% increase in paper bag use because they didn't have a fee. And now they're considering, as other communities have, considering instituting a fee. It also keeps the grocers whole. There was about a $30,000 to $40,000 cost shift to grocers by doing this. It costs about 6 cents for a paper bag, 12 cents for those nice Market of Choice ones with the handle, and 1 cent for a single-use plastic carryout bag. So that was the whole math rationale for the 5-cent fees to keep the grocers whole. And so this is really a business-friendly provision of the ordinance. Second, I think it's an incentive to get people to change their behavior to use reusable bags. The 5 cents has worked on the bottle bill for years, and I think it will work for bags too. It took me quite a while to get there, and the 5-cent fee was actually pretty important to get me to remember to take my bags from the house to the car and back it out to the car when I go to the store. And finally, but probably most importantly, this fee is completely avoidable by remembering to bring your reusable bag. You don't have to pay it. You don't have to go to Springfield. You just don't have to pay it. Just bring your bag. As far as the low-income folks are concerned who can't afford reusable bags, I applaud the efforts of Fred Meyer and Safeway, who donated 10,000 reusable bags to Food for Lain County. That's targeted specifically at low-income people who can't, can least afford to have a reusable bag. And I think we should look at exempting people that are on food stamps from the 5-cent fee. Can't do that here for legal reasons, but I think that's for another meeting.
Councilor Pryor?
Thank you. I appreciate having the time that this was being considered because I've talked to a lot of folks and I've given it a lot of thought. In fact, I've been back and forth and up and down and haven't known for sure exactly how I wanted to vote because there were competing values for me. I don't want to create rules that aren't necessary, and if I am confident that the public wouldn't just trade their plastic bag use for paper bag use, then I wouldn't need, you know, a 5-cent pass-through. But the notion that Portland's paper bag use has increased 500% is a significant indicator that maybe that would happen. And so, while I don't want to create a rule, just to create a rule, I don't want to look like I'm mom to the community, or dad, on the other hand, yeah, confusion there. I do want to try to be responsible. I want to get people to get to the right place. And so, yeah, I don't want to try to affect behavior unnecessarily, but I do want to try to create the kind of situation that we're aspiring to, what we want to get to. And so what was interesting for me was when Jim came, because I know that he's familiar. He's also a grocer, and he works in stores, and he does see day-in and day-out people and what they're doing. And for me, that was very persuasive. And so I think, finally, even though I've gone back and forth, I think that was the final help for me, was to realize that, at least for now, this can always change later, but while we're evaluating the fee, I'm willing to go ahead and leave it in place for now, but that we can continue to look at it. We will evaluate it later on and see if it is still needed. I would love to be able to get rid of it, but I also don't want to see a giant increase in bag use later on, in paper bag use. So as conflicted as I am about it, I'm willing to leave it in place, knowing that we will constantly be monitoring and reviewing this as we go.
Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. I've never seen a fee go away yet, but I was totally for the plastic bag ban and still am, and I was not really for the compulsory 5-cent charge. I voted for the, as part of the package. But I've been hearing, I hear from different people, I guess. I've been hearing from a lot of people who work in various places that it's a nuisance. Some people have told me that they're using a huge amount of tissue paper, not, this is not for groceries, but for other items, because the people don't want to pay for a bag, so they wrap, and that's paper too. I do, I prefer to think that people will gradually start to use, I've been taking my own bag for years, my car trunk's full of them, and I think more and more people are doing that. What I would like us to do is to have the city somehow purchase bags and put some kind of snazzy slogan on them. We used to have, we had airport umbrellas with Fly Eugene on them. We could get something, or get somebody to sponsor it and give them away, that you can get bags that are fairly cheap, that are washable and sanitary and everything. But I don't like the idea of forcing people to charge it, charge the fee, or forcing people to pay the fee. And I will vote, even though I'm an environmentalist, and above all, I think, but I will vote to suspend this charge. I think that I'd rather do encouraging things. Another thing I heard at a grocery store is that people are, some people are taking huge numbers of those plastic bags from the produce section and putting their groceries in them as they go out, which kind of defeats the purpose. And I've seen people stacking up things and hoping they won't, with an apple on top, and trying not to lose it while they're going to the car with a stack of things. And I do not think it's comparable to the bottle fee. The bottle fee, you get back, you get it back when you take your bottles back. It isn't the same thing at all. Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's be clear, it's not an incentive. An incentive is a positive outcome. It's something that happens that somebody gets a benefit from something that they do. This is a punishment. It's clearly a punishment if you won't comply. And it's the wrong thing for us to do. The City Council doesn't belong in the business of behaving that way over an issue this minor, and that's the problem I have with it. They read the Declaration of Independence at the beginning of the meeting, and this is a government of the people, and all of us in our community are the government, and we talk about that in times when there's rhetoric against the government, and one of the standard responses is, "We all are the government," and that's true. So if the whole community is the government, and that's a good thing, I defy any of my colleagues at the table to explain to me why you think that a majority of people in our community would vote in favor of this, because I don't think for a minute they would. I think it would be just like the fee, it would go down in a huge, huge vote. Now, you got to ask yourself something at that moment. Why is it that we at this table think we have a role to teach them something? I think that is the absolute wrong thing for us to be doing in this community. And I think it's, just like was raised, I think, by Nick, it's endemic of an opportunity and a reminder over and over again of overreach that people will shake their heads about and then take the serious stuff we do less seriously, because this is such a small thing, and we have no business doing it. And I'm just bringing it up, and I brought it up in the first place, because I'm trying to get us to what I think is reasonable. Now, maybe I'm off base, but I think that there are too many hardships this creates. It's something we don't have business doing, and we certainly don't have any business trying to teach everybody what's best. And I have a fairly strong feeling that this is not going to pass. But you have to ask yourself, if you're convinced you're right and you know the rest of the community disagrees with you, I'd urge you to try to square that with yourselves.
Councilor Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I too, as Councilor Pryor has wrestled back and forth whether this is an appropriate part of this ordinance or not. And I've heard both sides, and I've heard the sides of grocers out there who are in favor of this bag, the 5-cent fee. I have also, one of the things that we have not talked about is the fact that this is a floor and this is not a ceiling, and that other than grocers, we have other retailers who are out there charging, you know, the cost of the bag, whether that's 10 cents, 15 cents, whatever the case may be. I think, however, that, you know, we should not react on a motion. I think that we should react in a way that is forming good public policy. And I think it's a little bit premature, as I've said before, that we would go into an action of suspending the fee without having clear analysis about whether, A, it works or it doesn't work, or B, you know, if it doesn't work, we do away with it, but I think we need to have the facts. And I think that requires us to have some time to allow the legislation to mature, whether that's six months or a year. I think that we should at least have a reasonable period of time where we can get, staff can gather the facts, bring those facts back to council in a reasonable, organized fashion, and then we can make an intelligent decision, not based on reaction and passion, but based in fact and good analysis. And so, originally, I kind of, I was really, you know, close to supporting the position of Councilor Clark and Councilor Polling on this, but I really would think that we would be remiss if we do not allow this the appropriate amount of time, whatever time we deem is appropriate, for the ordinance to mature, for us to get the facts, and for us to come back to the public and say, okay, we've got the facts, and now we feel that we are in an appropriate position to take action.
Councilor Chirratt?
Thank you. Yeah, I would not support lifting this fee at this point. I think it's premature to act upon this particular part of this new ordinance. The public input that we've received so far, we've actually heard quite a bit of support for the fee, and frankly, have not heard compelling reasons for lifting the fee. Most of the negative comments have expressed annoyance and take issue on principle with the council compelling a charge for something that used to be free. I don't see that as equalling an undue burden, but rather an irritation. I hope Councilor Zelenka will make the motion to look at an ordinance to exempt SNAP recipients or to adjust this ordinance to exempt SNAP recipients, and I think he'll get support for that on the council. Other cities, Los Angeles, for example, which has a huge population and many folks of varying incomes, has instituted a 10-cent fee for their bags in the city. I'm actually okay with the principle that an elected body at the urging of residents takes steps on behalf of the community to reduce waste in our community and fees, which in this case do not go to the city, but actually to the retail establishment. Fees and other mechanisms are legitimate ways for us to try and effect positive change in the city. The pollution caused by the overuse of disposable items impacts the entire community. It's not merely a question of individual choices. So I will not be supporting this change to the ordinance at this time.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you. I sense from hearing my colleagues that this will likely not pass this evening, but there is one piece we haven't talked about that if there is support in the body, I'd like to see us change, and I don't know process for how to do it appropriately. I'd like to insert, if the ordinance remains, I'd like to insert the word grocery, paper grocery bags, for the simple sake that a lot of the complaints that I'm hearing about are for things that are more retail-based for purchases that are not grocery-based. And I think, and perhaps I'm mistaken, that this was around grocery store purchases more than anything else, and I don't know the process there for that. Glenn?
That would take a motion from the council directing the manager to schedule a public hearing on a ordinance to actually amend a different part of this.
And we have a question on the table, right?
Yes.
You can't do it.
So you can't...
It would be part of this ordinance. It would have to be a new ordinance.
Right, right. And so that would be a motion necessarily made after we've disposed of this, yes?
Start a whole new ordinance process.
Yes, well, I guess I'll throw it out there and say, I'd like to do that. I don't know if we have time for that this evening for the debate that may come of it, but I would certainly like to do it at the appropriate time.
I guess I would suggest, if you want to move forward with that, and you certainly could, that it might be more appropriate to do it in an environment where we could have a longer discussion about it.
I agree.
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote on this. All in favor, please indicate. One, two, three. In opposition, one, two, three, four, five, it goes down. And with that, I think we are through with the business of the day.